People to watch it. You don't look, you don't look into a lot of dollars that want to send this down. If you're not watching the dollars.
I'm going by memory, but we did approve. About the person for Saturdays, right?
It's in the budget.
It's in the, it's in the budget, yeah, yeah. And I think in my budget that I presented last year was a, um, is, is for three people, three days. But we just never filled that third position. So that's the other thing I'd like to talk about tonight. You want to talk about that now, or still talk about the position?
One more question about the position.
Sure.
So you're saying that this person would be a transfer station manager and a handyman. So when would they have time to be assistant road agent?
Well, that's the thing, you're gonna have to decide where you want to split this.
Oh, so we have to split.
You then, you'd almost have to have, that would almost mean you'd need another person. It could be strictly, you know, strictly highway.
Yeah, okay.
So.
So that.
Which they definitely need two full-time people over there, if not another part-time.
How many full-time part, highway people over there?
Two.
And nine.
Just, just us two?
And everybody else is part-time?
Yep.
How many hours of part-time work over there?
Well, we, depending on what we have going with the projects. So we, you know, twenty-four, thirty, maybe, we sometimes.
Very rarely that him and I are there by ourselves. There's usually a third person. Not every day, but at some point during the week.
Sometimes they come in for half a day or something like that, and.
So somewhere between twenty-four and thirty hours of part-time work on average a week.
Close. Yep. So that's just another perspective, something to think about. In the meantime, we do have, uh, people in place to take care of the day-to-day. Short-term, kind of like, well, like Mike is. Taking care of the day-to-day on a limited basis.
Okay.
You know, every week we got a call, Triano Waste, to have them come and pick up our dumpsters, our cans, it depends on what, when they're full, so it's not on a set schedule.
So is George? Who manages that?
I do.
You do, but in the short term, is that George?
I think it's, well.
We're gonna, Paul Mattel is offered to do the calling. Paul's the one who keeps us abreast what, what, what dumpsters need to be done.
What needs to be done.
And he says he'd make the phone calls for that. So.
I just want to make sure that we're covering the bases.
Oh, yeah. You know, I'm, I'm working really close and really agreeing on to make sure everything that I do is covered by somebody. Uh, we also, there are also, there's a master plan.
Could I see that plan when you do that?
Yep. Yep, well, there actually is a master plan that I did up at some point last year. Uh, I never did send it to the state for final approval because we already have one in there. But I've got a new one that I did. Total update to what we had. And that needs to go to the state, which I was, I'll probably put that in paper form. They need it electronic, they need it paper, and they need a course of check. So it's a hundred bucks to get that updated. It's just a regulation the state has. But I will get that over a few folks. That's designed, the state says you have to have that, so if a catastrophe happened and I was to drop dead, nobody, you know, someone could come in, open that book, okay, batteries is where they go.
That's.
Aluminum. Those, municipal solid waste is where that goes, with all the contact information. And that is all in paper form. So. I just got a, I just went down through it the other day. I took the town administrator's name out of it. I don't have a name to plug into it right now, and looks like what Mike's name is. Uh, might just put in town administrator with a phone number, the office phone number. That might be the way to do it.
Yep.
Leaves it kind of open ended that way. It can be updated at any time with the state without paying or anything, you just send a red line copy. That's it. So that is in place.
Okay.
And it's something that I never could put my hands on before. That's why I totally re-did it. So.
Um, so I had a couple comments about the job description. Uh, one's a question. So one of the, um, things I'm trying, understanding is, um, the liaison for Highway Department in Stonewater, who do you, what makes the transfer station manager, um, what qualified person to handle Stonewater?
It doesn't, but it would be the road agent, assistant road agent side. And that's something George wanted to have.
Okay.
That's why I plugged it in.
Okay.
I mean, we both basically wrote this, I did the final.
So you know.
Cause I feel like the person out on the roads should be the person doing Stonewater management.
Well, see, I mean, we're both out on the road. Cause you know, being my assistant, we've always worked close together.
Okay.
And if we're gonna put a position in there for that, I don't know how many more years I'm gonna work. So I'm thinking, a newer person coming in and being into that position, getting involved with the Stonewater situation and everything that's going on with Stonewater right now would be expensive to do. You know? Or you'd be doing this again.
Do you spend on the road though, versus George?
I probably, well, the best, the best way to do is how much time do I spend at the transfer station?
Okay.
And that's probably two to three hours a week maybe. So I don't spend a lot of time over there. It's mostly, and most of that's paperwork, you know, that I do. Phone calls, paperwork, making sure things are done. The guys themselves do the bulk of it.
So the rest of the time you spend?
I'm on highway, highway time.
Okay. Um, and my other question was, um, ability to obtain a Nihancha Solid Waters Operator's Level One license within one year prior. Is that really a requirement?
Answered to work at a transfer station, you have to have that.
So what if, shouldn't there be a requirement for the job and an expectation?
Think I had that in there as a requirement.
Um, but it says when they want to.
Oh, the ability, maybe they'll get it.
Yeah. Cause my concern is what if they don't get it?
You, you have to get it, they have to have it.
They require us that.
Yeah.
To have, having anybody, the worst that has to happen.
Yeah.
And they, you go to a class for one day, they pretty much give you the answers. You know, you sit through the class, they work right with you to get the test. By the end of the day, you have your license. So it's not a long.
So there's no likely they're both fatal?
Oh, not likely.
No, no. Every guy that we have over there has that license.
Okay.
Yep. It's renewed on a yearly basis, you need two and a half hours of continuing education to keep the license. The NRRA that we deal with, the Northeast Resource Company, they offer, um, it's called a long meeting, member operators meeting, it's held once a month, usually. November, December, they're not having it, and sometimes in the summertime, they skip a couple of months. You go to one of those meetings, that's good for an hour, hour and a half. So you go to two of those, two of those meetings a year, they're held in Epsom, or this past year they were held online, and you got your credits.
Do you people go to that or just you?
No, people. Yeah, anybody that holds that license has to go. And, uh, has to come up with two and a half hours. Uh, this past year, there was a lot of those meetings that weren't held, or they were held, virtually. They're always held, the problem is, they're always held on a Wednesday morning, we're open. I typically try to take a guy with me when I went, past years, and put a, have one of the other guys step in to watch the place when I took. Uh, this last year, everybody did it online. Uh, George, yours was the last, no, Paul Mattel was the last one, they just finished up, uh, and online. And some of those things online are through, uh, uh, Primex, some of them are through NRRA, or some are through also the state. DHHS, I think it is. Who's Tara work for? Tara Albright, you know, she's the one that's kind of in charge of, yeah, the environmental side of the state. And she has a whole list of classes that they've done that qualify. You sit in the computer, you watch it for an hour and a half, two, two hours, you get a certificate at the end. So it's, it's not difficult to maintain the license.
Great, thank you.
So is there a computer at the transfer station they can do that?
Not at the transfer station, they've actually used their own at their houses. Yeah, yeah. I do have a laptop, a Tom laptop that's over there. So that could be utilized if they need.
They'll be on their own computer.
And like you say, they have to print out a certificate, and won't print the certificate out until they finish the class. There's a little in thing that you do and.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Good. And they're good classes, they're informational for the most part. You know, there's not a lot of testing involved with them, but it's all good information if you're one of those.
That's basically what they want you to have.
Yeah.
What's coming in and the new stuff that's coming in off the market that. These things for batteries and stuff like that, you wanna, you know, you don't want to be thrown in the, the trash and you want to be recycling that kind of stuff.
Yep. So that is something they have to have.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, did you guys have any other questions for him before he, um?
No, I, um, I'll throw something out though. I would like to suggest that, uh, I'd be the liaison, the highway, the like, the transition. I don't know how you feel about that, because I have a lot more free time than you do.
I'm on travel.
You really get what you got, you see if we can figure this out. Just through, just through the transition. You want to hear?
I'm there.
Well, I'm there too, if you don't, if you don't need. You know? I'll just, I mean, maybe I can look at some of those things and give you another set of eyes with guess what I'm saying.
My last day is a week from Thursday, but I'm also available by phone afterwards.
I know.
I've said yes, there you go. I've said, I've said to George, because I've known George for forty-plus years, but just a phone call away. Now it's, it's not like, okay, well, I'm gone, you know, no, don't worry.
Thank you.
If you're not off the hook on the selectmen PC.
Okay. That is actually something I had to give up up there.
Higher day.
I did, so, um, for the time being. You did not want. Sitting selectmen, that's the key word.
That makes sense.
June, I can put back in for it. I may. Or I might, I might enjoy just sitting back.
Right, yeah. How many years do you have this as?
Ten.
Ten?
Yeah.
You might.
I don't know, it's.
No, you won't.
I'm about for punishment. I do enjoy it.
I tell, I look at who you're with.
Yeah, okay, you go. But I do enjoy it, so.
No, I don't want any objections to that either, I mean, you probably have more time than the rest of us.
We're into winter.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't feel you're the boat on that necessarily.
Just a temporary thing.
Okay, sure, great, thank you.
I just don't want to step on people's toes.
No, I don't think.
Thank you.
Um, it'd be good if you want to stop in and we'll go down, I think, we can get out through a lot of the things that. That happen over there, so, see the inside, see from the behind the car.
You might be able to allocate some of your responsibilities in the spot.
You know? Yeah?
Wow.
Good thing you were looking this way. You would have. Um, the other thing I'd like to talk about if we could.
So the plan is not to fill a position at this time, is that?
I think we're valuing, um, what the options are, is that what we are?
Yeah, that's what we're doing, yeah.
Um, so.
I think both of those options are reasonable, we just gotta look into what's better for us. Okay, I don't know what you're gonna say about.
The next thing I'd like to talk about is pay. And that's for the guys over there, we all know how the economy is and what's going on. I get a, I read what from Chuck, uh, where I am budget-wise. Uh, I've got about ten grand right now in my attendance line, which I'm not gonna come anywhere near close to using that, which we're doing down the end of the year. I did a, a quick and dirty analysis, if we were to implement the raises for the guys over there that I proposed for next year, could be done now, through the end of the year, with about, not quite, about four thousand dollars left over.
Okay. Um, so the only thing I have to comment about that is, um, I don't know if you've seen where we are with the budget. Um, I, I can make that number available to you. Um, we are kind of leaning towards a five percent, um, I'll call it a market adjustment. However, there was some adjustment, additional adjustments in the budget that I made for your line item because it looks like they took money away in 2020.
Could be, I don't remember.
Yes.
Yeah, they did, they took money, so that's what.
So you were at thirty-three, yeah, you were at thirty-three thousand. Um, and so it looks like they took money away from that, um, position. Um, I added that back in as part of a proposed budget from, um, 2022. We also funded for the fourth person, plus we did five percent on top of that. And so that ends up being.
I can see what that looks like.
Um, yep, I can tell you what it is.
It's close.
And so we are, we are a hundred percent in agreement on this yet, but it's kind of where we're leaning. Um, let me give you that, so, so that is. So you might have to do some, sharpen your pencil a little bit.
Okay.
Um, to see how you can make this.
Oh, that's right.
Um, it ends up being.
Anyway.
An additional two hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Eight thousand.
Two sixty-four. So that brings the proposed, and it's, you know, it's definitely off from where you asked, but that brings the proposed appropriation for 2022 to thirty-nine thousand ninety-three dollars. Um, we're not final on it. You know, and actually, we're gonna keep discussing it again in this meeting. So you, so you might consider that.
Can, uh, can I ask a question on? No, it's on the part of the pays, but it's the holiday part of the pay, I think we brought this up before. These guys get a holiday, they get darter than a half.
That's another problem, because they should be, that's something.
They should be, they're days paid. He's off.
I thought we saw that last year.
No, you only want a fraction of that. They get paid, I think it's three point two hours out of five, if they, if there's holiday.
So they don't collect BTO though?
They get nothing.
And this is, this is a discrepancy in our policy.
Yeah.
Is, um, some of our part-time people actually get BTO, others don't. So that's on the strategic formless. So for example, Andrea gets BTO for certain hours, these guys work those hours, but they don't get BTO. Um, so I think we need to have a deep discussion about that.
That's fine.
I mean, it's not like they're losing pay because they get paid, you know, I mean, well, they are, they're losing pay, but I mean, it's based on a regular schedule, on as far as the salary, the salary base is there, so. I mean, taking money away from them because they're taking the day off, there's not, there is anything to do with that.
No, I, that should be, that you should, I could have swore that should be addressed if it's, you know.
No.
If it's a Saturday, you pay for Saturday.
Yeah, or if it's a Monday holiday, they should get paid the five hours if they don't want to deal with it.
So I can, can you, I need to add that, probably bring that forward to this list that we need to resolve, because it might be, I don't even know if it's in the personnel policy, because I went back and forth with Caroline and this. And I don't think it's known that, but it just was a, like a verbal thing, that they wouldn't get PTO, even though they're working as, um, non-exempt, non-exempt employees in the same way other people are. So definitely a discrepancy there. So that might, so we want to bring to the top to help with retention, I'll say. Um, especially if we're asking them to give back a little bit in terms of salary increases.
Yeah. So how closely from the numbers that we have in my head is looking at, pretty close, right?
Um, I'd have to go, well, I have to go back.
Yeah, I'd have to go look at them, sit down with them.
I have, I do have the original one.
Yeah.
Um, but I think, you know, that would definitely add some value, um, you know, to the deal.
The guys, the lowest paid guy over there right now gets, thanks, thirteen dollars an hour, and that person would go to fifteen, fifty, the way I have it figured. And then the highest paid guy would be sixteen, twenty-five, is only one of those, and there's two of the others.
So we have, um, oh, actually, it's pretty significant. That's pretty just. Um, sanitation, so they had proposed at forty, so originally, when we had this first, when we first got this budget, um, with the two hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase and nine percent, um, that one was proposed at forty-nine thousand four hundred.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, and so, um, with the five percent, um, even with, um, you know, giving back the money that they took last year, um, funding the fourth position and also doing the five percent, um, it being. It ends up, let's see, it's probably one, it's getting close.
Probably like thirty-nine.
Right now, my salary, my pay comes out of the highway department, so if you, no part of it comes out of this budget. So if you decide to do something with the, with the, the manager of transfer and facilities director, for instance, you'll have to plug a number in somewhere for that into this, this budget. That could possibly be a fourth person. Or maybe so he just works, then I'd have to work more than this Saturday, so he'd work.
Saturday, one day.
So it was a proposed difference of about ten thou, ten thousand dollars more.
Correct.
So let, let me ask this, Ed. If you were to go back and look at increases, um, with your remaining budget, um, kind of knowing what the rate might be based on what was proposed a little forward, and you only have three people right now, um, how could you split that to make it work?
I'd have to keep it to three people, rather than having the fourth on a Saturday.
But you wouldn't do that until next year anyways.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And I'd have to just go back and look at my budget and see if there's some other places that I could attempt to shave it, and see. There's, you know, there, there's two big unknowns in this budget. One is you don't know how much people you don't throw away. So that's, you know, yeah, so how many tons are you gonna have to pay to get rid of? And same with the demo. And looking, looking at my numbers right now, uh, I've got about forty-nine hundred left in. So I got nine thousand left in the MSW side of it. Yeah, I just have to go look and see what I have left. The hauling side, for some reason, there's seventeen thousand left in that. And I don't think I'm gonna use seventeen thousand, I've only used eighteen statuaries. Have a look at that. This is, what, the third year, I think, I've run this budget now? And this was the year that I'm gonna, I was gonna pull it apart and see, so I have a really good track record as to where we at, as to what we can do.
Can you do that for me?
I will. No, I, I can do that. We got a good, good week of rain this week, so there's a little bit of time to sit down in the time office and.
So.
Jack, I have some time you can stop in and, and lend an extra set of eyes to it, too.
Saying the attendance, um, is just attendance, that's, um, not yours, yours.
Nothing.
Right, nothing over there comes out of mine.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's for three people currently?
I think that's how I figure it.
And then a fourth proposed.
Yeah. The way I figure the, the way I figure them, um, Paul Mattel, for instance, he's up back up top on, he handles the MSW, the trash and the recycling intake side of it. He works six days a week, I budget seventeen, because there's snow in the winter, he comes in, helps shovel, and then like, it's an extra hour per week. The average is out, uh, he may or may not use it all. I don't, don't, I don't encourage him to use it all, it's just, it's there. That's what I use for a number for budget, just a little bit extra in there, so the extra hour that he may have to come in and, you know, if he comes in, we, if we get three storms in a week, there's hours. So, uh, Paul Eames handles all the, uh, handling of everything that we do, from cardboard to aluminum to plastic. He's in there an extra two or three hours typically a week, and that's how I budget him as well. So that's why we end up with a little bit extra in there, plus I think I did figure that third person, the idea, because we have to fill that, so. Yep. But I, if you, if you can send me over what the exact numbers are for proposed for next year, because you don't propose, you didn't break out the hourly, you just gave me a, you just gave me a number, make this work within this number.
Yeah, I can tell, I can tell you what they are actually, um, so, wait, let me just pick this up, this question. I'll tell you how it, um, how the numbers come. So it ended up. But I can, I can also send it to you.
Yeah, because that'd be great.
So it ended up being, um, so gave back two thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars that was, um, removed from the twenty budget. Twenty twenty-one, um, the, the appropriation was thirty thousand eight twenty-nine, year before, the appropriation was thirty-three thousand two hundred and twenty. So I gave that back. And then, um, I added an additional person, but that, um, I only, um, put that thirteen fifteen an hour for the new person, um, and that was for four thousand two hundred dollars.
So that's just six hours on Saturday, right?
Yes.
And then, and then I did a five percent adjustment on that for an additional, um, sixty, sixty-one. So that's where I came up with, um, eight thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and a twenty-seven percent increase in that one item.
Yeah, if you can send that over to me, I'll see.
Um.
Look at that in the morning.
So I, I think my, my concern, like, how do we find, um, we have to agree, because we can't go backwards, you know, we can't like, move them forward to fifteen or sixteen dollars an hour.
Right.
And then move them back to twenty twenty-two. So you have to find a way to move forward comfortably now and, and twenty-two.
Right, but we're giving them, we're giving them, because the five percent makes the adjustment you want, right? Close to four.
No, I think it's off ten thousand.
But the hourly rate for the attendance.
I, I think it gets them closer, but it probably doesn't get them to, I'm sure, fifteen or sixteen.
The other thing we were trying to do was get it close to what the starting pay was at highway. So, cause that's where our, our, some of our part-time help comes from.
They go back and forth.
Yeah, they go back and forth. So if they're working transfer station at thirteen dollars an hour, they come over to highway and get fifteen.
They don't want to leave.
Yeah, it should, yeah, but they don't have a choice. You know, so, you know, trying to get that number close to the same.
Makes sense.
Second of all.
Yeah.
Cause there is, actually, all three of them over there, on both ways. Uh, wintertime, we end up a lot of times having, uh, Paul Mattel. So he'll run, he'll work that downtown, we're moving snow, he'll load the trucks. He has no desire to want to drive a truck, I probably would if he had to, but there's no problem that they'll want to come in, load the trucks. And we got plenty of drivers for the smaller stuff, not so much for the bigger ones.
So, um, Ed, do you think it would make a difference to them if we fixed the people issue and, you know, kind of move them forward some in this budget? Like, if we could figure out how to make that number work and then give them PTO that they haven't been getting, would that be acceptable to them for this budget? Because we can't, the problem is, we can't take really big bites without having a major impact on the budget.
Right, the thing is, all three guys are retired.
Yeah.
So, you know, they only typically three days a week, so.
But they would get holiday pay.
Yeah.
And they'd get vacation days.
Well, they do get the holiday now anyway. I don't know.
Oh, sorry, they would get vacation, they would get vacation time.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know whether they get vacation or not.
I don't think they do.
Yeah.
And I'll dig out the email that I had, Caroline, look at.
Yeah, I'll look at the, uh, what's, you have a, you have a number, how many hours a week you have to work before you get vacation?
Uh, I think it's sixteen.
Okay, so let's see how much they work, so they would get it.
And this was the question I looked forward was, why is some?
Is it sixteen?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's just, I think one of the little things that need to be cleaned up.
So maybe, maybe what he could do is see that he could land with the proposed increase as it stands, see where that gets them. And then think about the added benefit of PTO. But I agree, it's hard for me to think they're the worst paid people in town, and they're doing a great job. They could go anywhere else and get fifteen dollars an hour and more. So that makes it really hard.
Yeah.
I agree.
And maybe we need to have a number discussion about this.
I think we should.
I'm trying to lay out the.
So I'll, I'll get with you someday this week.
Yeah.
We'll lay this out.
I don't, I don't know if vacation would make a difference to them.
I really don't, that's why I say they're, they're all retired, the vacation side of it is, yeah.
No, they're just.
Yeah, they're retired.
They're looking for a sign you have.
They'd rather have the money.
I know. I think the money, I think the money would be more.
Money needs more at this stage.
But it's the point, it's the inconsistent policy that I think it should be corrected.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially at home, it's like, I mean.
Yeah, I agree.
To town tells them that you're not, that you're not working Monday, oh, by the way, we're all gonna pay you three, you know, three point two hours out of your five.
No, that's not right.
It really is unfair. It is unfair, really, yeah. And I've been trying to fight this one for. Especially because it's already figured in the budget. I don't, when I figure the budget for them, I don't break out a holiday, I'll look at how many holidays we have, right? Where can I shave that number? No, it's figured as five hours per day. The money's already in there, so.
So, Jack, would you like to kind of sit down and look at this, maybe this week, and kind of look at the numbers, what we're proposing? And if that isn't even close enough, where we could get them closer? But, but maybe not, you know, because originally it was a. Originally, it, we had a. That was before the added percent, oh, it was a sixty percent increase on that one. So now it's a twenty-seven percent increase.
Just noodle around a little bit.
Yep, yep. Nope, I've said some of it, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, have to work on that.
George, is there something you want to bring up?
I think it's something we could start talking about. And I brought it up, I brought it to the attention of Caroline, and she was supposed to pass this out to the previous boards. The temporary bridge on Old Mill. How long is this temporary bridge worth being there for? You know, I don't know the whole background of that.
Where is Old Mill? It's my road. It's a, it's, I'm going by memory, I got the envelope.
I thought it was supposed to be like ten or twelve years or something.
It's, I go to see it's twenty years and about ten years into it.
Is it that long?
Yeah, I know the temporary bridge is twenty years.
Okay, because I know they put money in the CIP or anyone put money in.
We could be as much as twelve or fourteen into that. Actually, because it was a while ago they put that down there.
Oh, was it under your watch that they put it in?
No. For me. And I was talking to Mike Spiny, he was here when that was done, apparently, and the temporary bridge was supposed to be a temporary bridge, maybe ten years or fifteen years, whatever.
Is that a document?
It's actually, they were talking about building a bridge for half a million to seven, to a million dollars. This document right here that I had, Ed brought this guy's attention to us. We haven't come down, look at the bridge that's there. And with the money in the CIP that's already there, no engineering involved because this is a design-built. This bridge could be replaced in three weeks. And it costs two hundred and less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's road work and everything, bringing the bridge back to normal with saving three quarters of a million dollars.
When did you get that number?
This year.
Spring.
The spring.
It might be up a little bit from that.
Might be up a very little bit from that, because there's no, there's no steel involved. So the first is steel, it's that, there may be concrete present involved.
Is that the proposal?
This is the proposal to me.
So I'm gonna give a little history, this is way before me, it was. I'm not sure why the board that was cut there went, what the term, a temporary bridge at the time? Money, yeah, but it's, it's still expensive, temporary bridge. But the other thing is, there was something about history to the bridge, too, this Old Mill, Long Mill Bridge, it spoke of some kind of history to it.
Having a poem about history.
Chuck in the fore.
Actually put a new bridge right over that old bridge.
I mean, that's part of the reason, again, I'm going by memory, but I think that's part of the reason we use a temporary bridge.
But I, I think it's something we guys need to put on the table, just start thinking about.
No, I agree, and I don't think.
Saving three quarters of a million dollars versus.
Well, we don't, we're not gonna spend nine dollars on a bridge.
Oh, but so I mean.
Well, like, two things, one is how much longevity do we have left? And two is, really needs to be part of SIT discussions?
Yes, agreed.
Because that would be a lot.
Yes, agreed.
Right, oh, and I agree with that, but.
What George is saying is we want to do address it, we should address it as a warrant article if we can, addressing, you know, something that may cost two-fifty as opposed to half.
Because, I mean, they were looking at engineering and all that stuff. And we had this guy come in who's been doing bridge work for thirty-nine plus years, but he told us, he's got his whole history in that book, pretty much.
I've read, so I'm not gonna, sorry.
Oh, so you did.
You've given me this, I've read through it, I've seen.
Okay.
A half dozen bridges that they've done.
Oh, it's a lot.
No, but there's about half dozen in there.
Yeah. And, and Ed just had, we've done this year or whatever, and I'd looked at that bridge that they did, and it was a situation like you're talking about. The underneath bridge was historical, so they didn't want to do a bridge, so they've been over it. So, you know, I mean, looking at cost savings, there's a big way of saving some big dollars where there's no engineering and all that stuff, because they can, you know, engineer it, they can build this bridge behind the existing pillars, but they don't.
One of my concerns is this is probably rounding up on the time where we might be talking about a million dollar bond, the bridge, and the fire truck.
Yeah. That's true.
You know, we're talking, like, if you're talking within the next couple of years.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if we are talking, I don't think we're talking the next couple of years for that bridge.
Okay, that's good news.
I don't think we are.
That's good news.
No, no, I'm like.
Right, but all George, I think, has presented before, when we do, he wants us to look at another alternative besides the expensive.
Agreed.
Yeah.
It should go on the SIT radar, though.
Yes.
And.
I think that they are putting money away for this temporary.
It's, it's on, it's on the list of SIT, I saw it when we sat down.
Yeah, that could be.
Peter?
Because, you know, I mean, it's fine to have, you know, engineering down on all this stuff with this, you're talking about engineering fees that cost half what the bridge is gonna cost.
But it should go on the CIP.
I think we have applied for it and, is it like eighty percent?
It wasn't any, we had built a bridge over in Ry, a few years ago, and there were no state funds available at the time.
At the time, yeah. But I think that they've applied for it, but of course, we.
What?
Supposedly this for gross capital cost of seven thousand dollars.
Oh, so it's another temporary bridge in.
Oh, purchase year twenty thirty.
What are the temporary one costs is?
Two seventy-five, I think.
So that's.
How much?
It goes up two seventy-five.
That bridge costs two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
I'm guessing, no, how much was it?
A temporary bridge?
A temporary bridge, no, it wasn't that.
How much was it then?
I don't have no idea.
It was a lot.
Wow.
I feel like, was Jeff St. Jean?
I believe so.
Was?
It might have even been before him, but.
So it's probably been within the last, how many years you got here?
I'm sorry, I'm on my fifth.
So probably, maybe less than ten.
I'm gonna say about ten.
But it's not there, not projecting to deal with this until twenty thirty.
Yeah. Down the road, it seems pretty solid and.
I noticed, I've been noticing some cracks that's sounding in the, but it's a wooden deck, if you remember that. And the hot tub's had a crack in places, but, you know, I mean, we're just keeping an eye on things still, so.
Do we have an electronic copy of this?
Uh, no.
And we might want to scan it. Do you mind if we keep that scanned?
Oh, no. It's safe, it's the town's fault. But that, I just figured it's, you know, I think something should be put in the radar.
No, I agree, thank you.
Because, I mean, to me, especially there, to spend half a million to a million dollars on a bridge is, you know, a lot of money. And I believe that same process could be used on Oak Street if they wanted to do that. If the town's gonna be involved with that one. Because you know you're gonna be paying part of that bridge also.
They just did that about five years ago, too, didn't they?
Well, the Oak Street Bridge is going up, it's gonna come down completely, they're gonna put a new bridge in there, so the station will bring part of it, but.
But they just did some, like, putting wood on, I'm surprised that they put wood on it like four or five years ago.
Oh, yeah, but, you know, Band-Aid's been around for a long time.
Thank you.
Oh, the new machine, new sidewalk machine, is supposedly, they're enrooked to the daily ship, so it'll be a few weeks. The snowblower won't be here right away, but they would like, you know, if we want to bring the machine to us, we, they'll take part in the check, we already got a PO approved for that, so they'll have us, we need a check signed for them for that.
So it's still hasn't got to the deal yet, huh? It still hasn't got to the deal yet.
Well, as of last week, it was enrooped, so it's probably there now, and it's probably a couple days in the shop, so we may, at the end of the week, but I'm not gonna hold my. Oh, I'm thinking, I'm thinking it's probably, no, it's not in a container ship, it's built in the United States.
That's good, anyway, that's gotta be.
But I'm thinking that Ed's already at the show.
As far as similar one.
Similar one, so it's probably the same one. They keep saying it's not there yet, though.
You guys have a call in the morning.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ed, I'll talk to you before you leave.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
When's your last day, Ed?
Uh, we're from Thursday. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so we probably want to get, so we still have left. That is the third.
I'm sorry you had to wait all this time.
Oh, no worries, it's an escape from my three kids.
No, I don't blame you.
Probably fighting with the kids right now.
So, Celia, the reason we asked you to come in is because we've been pondering the request for funding from the Rec Director. And we, we have some concerns about the plant forward. Like, we feel like it's gonna be a little bit more, I don't wanna call it a busy plan, but a more concrete forward for that position. Have any additional information that you have kind of settled on for how that position will work itself out?
Well, the committee is not actually in charge of that, it's actually the Select Board, because you're the hiring agent. And so I went through my email while I was sitting in the meeting. Email from June second, twenty twenty, when the previous Select Board approved a job description for this part-time Rec Director year-round.
Okay, did you forward that to us?
I have not yet, I can't do that. And it was presented to the Rec Committee, our issue was that it allowed thirteen thousand just for the Rec Director. So all of the money in that line went for the Rec Director, and it said bi-weekly pay of five hundred dollars. Which we, as Rec Committee, didn't think was appropriate or feasible. Because we think that Rec Director job, that line should include like office supplies and materials, and we're not, and as I included in the budget, that final spreadsheet is based on a number of hours, and we may not reach the number of hours that, or we may. So we were kind of hesitant about the thirteen thousand being directly allocated to the Rec Director. So the email I got from the previous Chair of the Select Board reads, please find the approved job description for the part-time Rec Director. This was approved by the Select Board, June first, twenty twenty. It is also discussed and approved to not post this position until we have a better understanding of how long COVID- nineteen will continue. As the town offices are closed to the public, as well as keep our thoughts that things will calm down and see things get back to normal. We will continue to advise the committee of the status and what it is focused, if you have any questions, please let us know. So I can forward that right now to you about these.
That was June of twenty twenty?
June second, twenty twenty.
Okay. Because, so they approved that, but they didn't fund anything in twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
No, we're calling COVID. She has a COVID?
So I reached out to Kelly Anderson, because she did submit a letter, you know, kind of asking us to really consider that. So I reached out to her about homelands to maybe help put together a plan, a more concrete plan around that position. Haven't heard back from her yet. I might have to knock on her door.
And I can talk to her, too, because we've become friends, working on the committee for years together.
Okay, oh, because I feel like she probably has some great ideas, and she actually kind of runs her own business, so she might have some value in that, so she, she is, geez, what is it, what is it? But she's like a trainer, right?
She's a massage therapist, but she's, but she's also does like personal training, and she also does.
Probably does some of swimming, I'm sure.
She used to swim, to be a swim coach for the Dover Swim Team, or the Seacoast Swimmers, but she gave back to be, spend more time with her children. She also is very active, does like tennis lessons and stuff. So she's very athletic and would love to see some of these programs in our community.
Yeah, because I really feel like we need a liaison and advocate for the school as well to kind of drive this program.
So, yeah, the job summary for this, it would be, the supervisor would be the Town Administrator. And the job summary says, the essential function of the Rec Director is the management of the town recreation department, working to bring together, to bring recreation to residents of all ages. Prior experience working with children is required. Excellent organization and communication skills required. And specializing in the following areas, special events, arts and crafts, sports, games, and working with school-aged youth and our senior resident experience supervising staff. And then under summary of essential job titles, one of the things is to prepare the budget, so it comes out of the committee's hands, and it's a paid talent employee that does the budget versus a group of volunteers. They would be the liaison between the Select Board and the Rec Committee, or, and to both groups. They would evaluate effectiveness of recreation facilities, areas and services, work in accordance, approving things with the Select Board approving policies and policies, provide long-range plans to meet the recreational needs of all age groups in the town. That, it would be supervised by the Town Administrator. Responsible for seasonal and weekly planning of the summer camp. Filing accident reports, because that became an issue in twenty eighteen, is that we had a lot of liabilities that were not brought to the town's attention. And if, because we're on the town's insurance, if it were a liability that was catastrophic, it needs to be reported to the town insurance within forty-eight hours. And not all the reports were coming to the Town Administrator. So that's in there to inform them, overseeing, marketing of all of our programs. The Director will work with the Volunteer Rec Committee, civics groups, schools and organizations to generate offerings and participation. Soul will reach out to neighboring recreation programs for support and collaboration. That is the last bullet point under there, is to work with the school and everything else.
So I think our concern in your proposed budget was that it was a five percent increase to the bottom line. And, so would you be willing to give up the ice skating rink for that position?
I would say yes for this year, because we've had the, we've had the Rec Director on our agenda for much longer. And the Rec Director could take over writing the, writing grants and for this, and could potentially help. for this, and could potentially help get outside funding for we wouldn't pay so much for, like, the skating rink.
So your proposed appropriation for summer day camp is up twenty-two thousand dollars. Do you expect that to be fully revenue generating?
Yes.
That's a fifty-nine percent increase there, but your, your plan is gonna be fully self-funded?
Yeah, well, this is
So it'll be offset, right, caution?
Yeah.
So if you didn't have that amount of people, it goes down?
It's based on the number of campers, and when we last did camp in twenty eighteen, we were looking at a seven-week camp. We were proposing a seven-week camp in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. I don't think we even planned for, oh, we planned for a seven-week camp in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. But looking at the school calendar, we're looking at an eight-week camp, which is an additional week for all of those campers. And we a lot of money too, um, before and after care, which is an additional fee, um, for families. That pays above and beyond what the cost of that covers some of our overages for staff and stuff like that. So.
Have you, um, thought about how you might work, like, with neighboring communities for this program? And, and also have you considered the fact that enrollments are down recently? Um, and, and also to, I would tag on to that, how much of this review is generated by outside residents?
Um, so I do have that information.
I think it's small, so. It's like a few kids that come in from the other side.
Um, I did a spreadsheet a couple of years ago, based on the numbers, and I would have to look it back up again. But I can think off the top of my head, the large families, like, um, there were, the majority of our campers were single campers, like, one child per family. Then we gave, based on the number of children you had, um, so like a ten percent discount for the second child, and then a little bit more. Um, so the families that were three or more, there were two Rollinsford families that were three or more at the time, and one family came out of town that was three or more. Um, and the Rollinsford families, if they register for, when we were doing a seven-week program, if they registered for all six weeks at once, even if they weren't gonna come, they would get a week free. But that was only Rollinsford residents, and Rollinsford residents paid a hundred dollars a week. So getting six hundred instead of seven hundred, and usually the week of the everybody's on vacation, so it's pretty light that week, and staff is also gone that week. And the camp counselors are not paid unless they're at work, and if they go home early because of, like, loans or don't come to work, that's a savings for us. Out-of-town residents are slated to pay twenty-five dollars more a week, and they don't get the discount for paying for the whole summer. So out-of-town residents for a seven-week program bring in eight fifty for the whole summer. Um, for an individual child. And so I don't have the breakdown on this computer, I don't think. Um, but I can get you the breakdown of the campers were in town, how many campers were out of town, how many camp, how many were Camp Raleigh, and we actually made money. The, the teen camp made more money than Camp Raleigh did, and they were coming three days a week for a hundred dollars. Um, and they were going on trips every day, so the teen camp helped upset that. But the, a previous select board asked us to, um, change the way we did things and get rid of the teen camp in place of a rec director for year round. And yes, I have talked to other communities. Um, not every community on the Seacoast has its I've talked to Northwood, they don't have a summer camp. They, they send their, if you want to go to summer camp, it's not in the town of, um,
You go to another town.
You go to another town or another agency. Um, last year Summersworth was only Summersworth residents, but they do allow other residents normally if there is space, and you pay up charge. We've talked to them. We've talked to Barrington, and we got a lot of our materials from Barrington. Um, we sat down with, we had a conversation with the Elliot rec director, so we know, um, some information from them on what they do. We They do. And what Elliot actually does is they have two summer camps. One for school-aged children, that is like, um, Camp Raleigh, this one-site stuff. And then there is one that is, um, like hiking and outdoor adventure one, and they have two camp directors that run it during the summer. And during the rest of the year, the one that does the hiking, they have one camp director that does
Is year-round?
Is year-round, but he does senior programs and stuff, and he, they get a grant from York Hospital to keep community members active, and they pay half of his salary.
Is there an opportunity for us to do that?
I don't think that York Hospital would do that with us, but, um, Wetback Douglas or Mass General might be somebody to look into with that, but U N H also would give us a rec director or a recreation management student, and they would pay fifty percent of the wages through, um, work-study money. So U N H and Wetback Douglas are both opportunities could be pursued for that. And Rochester has a summer camp, as well as the Y at Portsmouth, both have summer camps that take anybody.
But are, is, are the towns our size typically have summer camp with our student population? Like, have you done any research around that?
Um, I am not the one to ask about that. David Josko did do some research on, like, towns our size, and he's a rec committee member in what they have to offer.
Well, so I'm the rec, the executive, so maybe I need to have a discussion with them.
Yeah, so you're switching.
So is Dover?
Yes.
Is Dover, I'm just asking, so is, if, is there a program in Dover where Rollinsford kids could go if they want to pay a fee?
Yeah, you can go there.
Well, it's probably, and Mosh would too. I'm just wondering.
Um, Camp Cool, um, which is run out of the ice rink, our kids could attend. That costs us more money than it, well, yeah, there's a Dover resident price and an out-of-town price for that.
And then is Mosh with South Berwick, is that?
Um, Clubhouse Kids, you can go there. They do, actually, Clubhouse Kids does things a little different. Um, and the town of South Berwick does have a summer camp too. Um, Clubhouse Kids does a daily rate, so you can send your kid every day, or you can send them by the week. It's up to you. You can pick and choose which dates you want to go. And then it's three hundred and twenty-five dollars a week for their summer camp. And maybe three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the whole summer for the town run camp.
So, so I think what we need to know, Celia, is whether or not we're going to fund this rec director position. So what I'd like to say, what I'd like to propose is, um, since Celia was willing to, um, forfeit the ice rink, that we put in funding, um, in the amount of, so the request was for seven thousand dollars, sixty-two hundred dollars more for a ice rink. So what I'd like to propose is that we fund the rec director line
How much is that?
Um, for ten thousand. But contingent upon solid being put together for the position. So not just a drop, a job description, but a path forward, um, for the program.
And that's something that that will, like, select board and rec and, yeah.
I mean, that's what, so that, so when we look at that budget, the only fund, assuming that, um, the summer camp is fully self-funded, is really eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So it's just the facility, it's the director and?
It's the director, um, and it's also, um, senior programs for five hundred, Salmon Falls Family Day for five hundred. And then there was eight hundred dollars for winter rec basketball. So really, the ask is for, like, I'm seeing it's gonna be like eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars, assuming they're fully funded, um, for their big camp.
Uh, and basketball does not fully fund, but they do bring in money. Um, they, they try to fully fund. It depends on the number of kids, and it depends on, um, a, the teams, how many teams we can get together, but it's been thirty or thirty-five dollars that each player pays, and that covers, like, um, insurance and rents for home games. Um, and there's been talk that we should sell concessions or something, but with COVID, we can't do that, but, um, that has
Is there interest in that this year?
That is something we need to bring to this group, actually, when our last rec committee meeting was only three people. Um, and it was the person that's gonna take over basketball. The school's mandating that we wear masks anytime we're in the building. And we need to talk to the school, find out what their policy is on masks and COVID-19, and talk to you, because you're our authorizing board, so we need to be in compliance with your COVID-19 policies too.
Okay, so I, I will make the motion, um, to move forward with that funding with the contingency that a will-defined plan is put together and a complete job description. And then I think that the executive of the rec committee has to work with the rec committee to put that together. But if we can't come up with that plan, and also, I do want to validate revenue, um, like estimated revenue, school revenue, to make don't get in trouble there. I'd be willing to consider that.
Okay, one second then.
And so there's no promise. Um, the, the promise is that there's work to do, and we have to make sure that work gets done in order to actually fill that position, so.
But if the work gets done, then, then we'll I want to make sure, I want to make sure we're gonna have attendance.
Exactly, and enrollment is concerned.
That's my concern.
So there's some, some research work that really has to go into that as well, I think. We, what attendance has been historically.
And I know COVID has a big impact.
We had previous to COVID, a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five kids from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen.
But that's summer day camp, right?
Summer day camp.
That doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna participate in the rec program is a problem, you know?
Yep, and I actually sent you, Kelly Anderson, in August of twenty twenty, put together, um, a, or last summer, summer twenty twenty, put together a, what we call roadmap for the rec committee, and it breaks down by month, what the, the committee does, and what needs to be done on a month-to-month basis, and so I just forwarded that to the whole select board.
Do you use it? Do you have it now?
Um, Kelly and I went over it, oh, and we went over it with, as a committee, and, um, I think so, um, it goes into depth as far as even in, like, October, start communication for basketball with the R G S principal, and
I propose that we have a separate meeting, um, only because we have probably another thirty minutes to get through this agenda.
Well, you know what, I would, maybe
We have to make a decision on the motion first, or do we want to table it?
When do we need it for? When's that meeting with the budget committee?
Tomorrow.
Not this, no, that's not for this?
Um, rec department.
It's Wednesday night. I received a email from John who went away tonight. Make sure I represent.
Um, and then there's cemetery and the library as well tomorrow, so, um.
Tomorrow night or Wednesday?
Wednesday.
It was today.
Today's Monday.
It's Wednesday, start Wednesday. Um, so I feel like we either make a, make this motion, um, or we table it. We can also get input from the budget committee on their proposal.
Why don't we, why don't we do that? Table it and get input?
Okay, file my motion.
Okay.
Um, and get input from the budget committee, and that's probably ideal, because really, they are
You'll be there, we'll be there. How much will budget stuff we have to, I shouldn't say, do we have, how much will budget stuff we wanna cover tonight? Think we have in a half hour, you wanna try to shop it?
Well, we still gotta go through the Avatar assessment reassessment contract. Um, we have to talk about, um, fund balances, um, for the reserve funds and what we want to do there. And, um, we have, um, yeah, so those things together.
Okay, let's see. You guys may get tomorrow. And just, okay, then we'll get the budget with them. Okay.
So we'll table it until we talk to the budget committee?
So I do have information on the, that was forwarded to me from David Josko on the ice rink.
Can you forward that to us?
Yes, I'm gonna do that, but I wanted to make sure.
So send us any information you have that we can contemplate. And let's see with the budget committee what they're doing on this as well.
Um, I know that last year there was discussion about the, what happened to the rec director position. They were looking for them on the budget.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Celia.
Thank you.
So we'll see you on Wednesday night?
Yes.
Can I ask what?
Um, so these things might be much quicker. Um, we, we have to have a assessment contract.
Yep, you guys still gotta look that over, right?
I don't think it makes sense to me, because I'm pretty sure I got an email that said that the last time we did a reassessment, it was like the eight thousand dollars. Um, but this proposed contract is only four to five, which is a thousand dollars. Um, I did, um, call and leave a message, but I'm from that.
Huh, they're usually pretty good about that.
So I'm not
We're gonna hold off and sign on that till we find out what's going on.
I think we should. Well, and we really need to know for budgeting purposes as well, because
How much was it? Big difference.
So the reevaluation fund, um, I think you need the funding balances. So the Culvert Repair Fund has forty thousand, hmm, there's a typo here. It actually reads as four hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, ninety-one cents, but it's probably
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand something. The ten thousand is due from the town. Um, and then uh, the revaluation fund currently has thirty-seven, six, nine, six, point eight seven, plus eighteen, seven, fifty due from the town, for a total of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. So that contract, if it's accurate, is covered under this reserve fund. But I'm worried, because I'm, I'm pretty sure I haven't emailed, I thought I had emailed, it said eighty-eight thousand last time, so I need to double-check that.
Where's the Avatar, where's the Avatar contract right now? It's forty-five, right?
It's forty-five, yep.
Okay.
Um, so we need to double-check that number.
Yep.
Um, so I'll call again, but I'll also try to dig up, I, I think I asked Chuck for the number, and I thought that's gonna be
Eighty-eight?
I think so. Um, so the other part of this contract, um, we have to consider is, um, on paragraph, um,
I can get it written down. Hmm, I can get it written down.
Eight point two, so that's, that was paragraph two of six. Um, the other part of this contract is um, we have to provide them with space and equipment. So I'm a little concerned about, or we need to consider how we're going to make that work. Because everybody's very spread out right now. So that, we'll have to give that full consideration.
Space office issue and accommodations, paragraph eight point two, what you're referring to?
Yep, the Miss Collins shall provide suitable office spaces with desks, tables, telephones, access and chairs for use of the agents and employees of the company in performing their necessary work.
How many, how many people are they gonna have?
They have a table and a table printer, table printer and a computer and a chair.
How, how many people?
Two. Just one. Oh. And it was right in, in the, the skateboard office.
So while we all saw. Well, so all the offices are going to be pulled down, so we need to think about that, would you?
But they have a desk now?
No, I don't know.
No, because they moved everything.
They add one when they come in, some filling space. So that is the other.
But then they work out of here during the day. So then they have more people.
They spread out.
So they take all their stuff out when they're done every day?
Yeah.
No, I see you saying up and down, okay.
Um, so there's that, so I would rather um hold on signing this until we know for sure what the costs are.
I'm about to.
Um, I mean, if this is truly the cost, that's great because then we might be able to get away with not funding the revaluation fund this year. But then, well, I mean, yeah, so there's that, and then.
So I just, what, what, you probably already said, but what makes you think that that contract from Avatar is not correct?
I don't think it's not correct, I just think that I read that the last time we did this.
Was eighty-eight times?
Was eighty-eight.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that either I misinterpreted something or that this number is really high.
Okay, got it.
Um, and then, so I talked about the revaluation, the consultation, and then, um, so a couple of things. Um, the White Worth Douglas payments, payment payments, so it looks like we're not going to have an issue with that because it's not part of the operating budget. So um, just a quick update on that, Mike, um, there was an issue where we had White Worth Douglas um pay for property taxes when they had filed for an abatement. So they paid in forty-five thousand dollars that they shouldn't have paid, and now we have to repay them, we have a legally binding agreement to repay them. So we're trying to figure out where that's coming from, I think we got um enough information from the auditor to know that it's not going to have an impact on our operating budget.
Good.
Um, but um, we have to think about that for that. I, and I don't know enough about the abatement part of it to know what the impact is for future years. Like this year we're okay, but I don't know if the next two years there's going to be an impact. So that might be something that we add to your list to look into.
Yeah, the people.
Okay. By the way, there's a file in the drive for it. Okay. That has all the papers and, oh, let's see if I can find that information. Um, and so the, hold on, let's see, so the last thing was the budget. Um, so I made the adjustments that we talked about.
Yep. That's one point six, huh?
Um, and so where we're at is one point three six. Point six three.
Right, yeah.
So it's one point six three percent over last year for a difference of thousand forty-five dollars. Um, so that doesn't. So the, the open items around this are insurance increases.
Did you put rec in that back in?
I did not.
So that's gonna change it then?
Um, right, so rec is not in there. Um, any, actually, I take it back, I did, I did, I did, and you'll see it's highlighted. Um, I put seven thousand in as a low number. Um. For rec.
What else are you saying right before that?
But um, this, the other thing would be percentage difference. No, actually, this is wrong. Um, this is gonna be wrong because I applied five percent um on the summer day camp, which really should have been, because that's, let me give you that number again. So, so um, I were to put ten thousand dollars in the rec line item. This is why I'm not as fast tonight, I don't have a mouse.
Oh, that is.
It's in the bag, so actually, that would bring us to.
Forty-three thousand.
So uh, putting back the, the full summer day camp. Um, the increase ends up being fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. And that includes a ten thousand dollar line, uh, funding for the rec director. And that's two point three four percent. I'm going with this one, so I can tell you.
So are you guys ready for Wednesday night? Budget, are you guys ready for budget Wednesday night?
Uh, well, cemetery and library are easy, that's.
Yeah, that's all you have, is cemetery, library, rec.
Uh, let me double check that, but I'm pretty sure it's just.
That's, that's where it is.
So if we did um add the ten thousand for rec.
Yep.
Um, it's an increase of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars, um, one point nine three percent increase.
One one?
One point nine three.
One, so it's.
So now that doesn't also include any adjustments that we might make to transfer stations, um, our other grades. So those are the open items. Is rec, um, transfer station and insurance.
So.
Oh, and one other thing?
We don't have a balance, I mean, we don't have a bottom line yet, it's gonna probably be close to two percent.
There's one other thing. There's one other thing um that I found.
Twenty-two minutes.
Um, so one of the other things that came up was that there's a change in the planning and zoning, um, admin support lines. So I, I went.
Is that the sixteen, sixteen dollar one?
Yeah, so I went back and looked at the, the budget from last year. And we had been funding that position in twenty twenty. Um, between the planning secretarial and the zoning secretarial for about fifteen hundred dollars. And then this last year's, um, it went up to almost seven thousand dollars. So I wondered how that happened, like what changed about that position that, other than it got combined into one line item, was two line items. Planning secretarial was eleven thousand, eleven hundred eighty-three dollars and zoning was four hundred and eight. So around fifteen hundred dollars, but then in twenty twenty-one.
Went to seven dollars?
Oh, it's almost seven thousand.
Increase in hours and the increase in sale.
So I don't know, we'll have to dig up the minutes, um, probably from the meetings to figure out what the change.
Yep, I think almost fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred, I'll do that.
Wow.
Do you know anything about that somewhere?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, um, so I think we need to investigate that as well.
And I, I'm kind of curious, I, I had these last meeting too, it's like two different quotes for salt, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do with these, there's no, there's no PO around here. So I'll ask, I'll ask Chuck.
Okay, so um, do, do we want to, um, so you're gonna get with Ed to see how the numbers can work out. And then we have the recreation budget on Wednesday. So land use is the, um, land use, admin support is the other thing, but we have to switch it around.
I got a PO here too, but when's our, when's our next, we have a meeting on Monday coming up? Is there any, is there a reason we should?
Um, well, only to finalize the budget.
Maybe we might want to just do one hour meeting.
Yeah, why don't I, why don't I try to put anything in there? We can just make it strictly budget?
Right.
Nothing else, any, because you know, we're having more people. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
I think so, and I'm going.
What? You going to answer?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, let me just, let me just pass this PO, what we're doing.
So, all right, so we don't want to make any adjustments to the budget yet, we want to wait until we meet with Ed, we meet with the budget committee. And then, um, and we somehow dig up information on the change to that.
Okay, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then the one other thing is we need to um see if we can get any early information about the insurance increases for this coming year. Um, personnel, life, unemployment, workforce, so we don't have numbers on it.
And I know I'm gonna reiterate this, but I keep on pushing DRA to try to get that right, uh, tax rate set. I got a PO here though, I'm just gonna read off quick. I got PO number two zero zero three, it's for, it's to payable to Millways Incorporated, and it's for postage for the tax bills coming up. So it's twelve hundred, twenty, twelve hundred, uh, point four two six, so it'll go with five hundred and ten dollars.
How's second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys look that's worth, it's the setup tax bills.
All right.
Yeah, I think, I think Monday, clear everything up, I mean, we're pretty close, Tim, you feel pretty good about everyone you've got all the time?
Are we into new business?
We are.
Yeah, what I've done here, sorry.
So we just need to schedule this meeting, so we'll make sure to schedule Monday, um, for just a budget workshop.
Oh, period, nothing else.
Any other business to come before the board is next?
Um, I have a Gmail.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, the newsletter, oh, we missed some stuff. I have got to have something final by the end of the week.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna ask you something, all right, all that. The uh, the conversation we had about the water and sewer and center of the camp and stuff, and stuff like that, will we put something in the newsletter about that?
I'm sure we did, at some point.
I mean, should we put it in this newsletter?
One page flat.
I mean, you were talking about raising the rent, reduce the cost.
Remember about, I don't know when it was, I'm gonna say it's long ago, the last mailings for, I don't know if it was Septic or.
Yeah.
So anybody gets that in the mail though?
No, I think he's talking about water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Are you talking about?
But that, we're looking for ways for them to get their information out, so should we put a little plug for that in the newsletter?
We have, I have something from Allison.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, I reached out to everybody and asked for.
Do you want approval of what you put so far?
Yeah.
I'm okay with you, I'm okay with you.
Do you have anything else?
I, you know what, tomorrow, I will, tomorrow I will go through what you wrote and I'm sure I'll have some things to put to you, I'll, I'll email you. Because I'm sure there's some things we talked about.
Well, I think there, I think there probably should be.
Okay, and then I think Kim and Jack could do the same. I'm not volunteering.
By tomorrow?
Well, no, no, I'm not saying tomorrow, but you can see what you can add, if you want to add to the newsletter.
About by tomorrow?
By tomorrow, the end of the week.
I want to read that.
Okay, I can do that, no problem, I can get all of your business stuff, I don't have time, well.
So we missed a couple of things in here, sorry.
Okay, I got something.
The heating proposals for P Gagnon, um, we have them, it's in our email, you guys can take a look at them.
All right.
And then the only other thing is um, um, the town hall, plantings and hall, seasonal decorations. Right? So we got a request, a email request from Kate Nesman.
Yep.
Volunteering to do some enhancements um around improvements around the building, um, holiday stuff. Um, but she basically wants to improve these things.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, so you're talking about Thanksgiving, putting up some turkeys or something like that, pumpkins and stuff like that?
Decorative stuff, um. I don't know when you, I know, Sally, you did some work recently.
If you put flowers.
Oh, I did the flowers, so thank you, I've taken a look at them.
No, it was nice, so do, we don't need a motion, we can just all agree on that.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have an objection unless Sally feels some ownership around it since she's been taking care of it, do you have any thoughts about that? About the flowers, about doing like.
Pumpkins and all that stuff, Kay said she'd like to do it.
Oh, if she wants to pumpkins or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we have, we have candles that go in the windows and.
I think it's like owning it like year round, like a year round.
Okay.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, we're smart about that.
There was something else, I'm sorry.
Um, just take a look at the, um, the P Gagnon proposals, and then that's all.
All right, yeah, we, we have one thing here from Throwback Brewery, I don't know whether you saw it, it was to Carolyn and us.
Yeah.
Have we not approved that yet?
No.
Is this something you gotta sign or you just?
Yes.
We have to approve that?
Yes, we have approved.
Second. So.
I think that needs to go through Gerald and Rassif.
Yeah, but we got something, we have to sign something for that, they, they want to have.
No, he's, he's fine with it.
They want to be able to serve alcohol.
He said he's fine with it, he just, he wanted to make sure, we just had to approve it.
Correct.
Rec and speaking, we're running out of that. Um, well, it's not usually this chaotic or being, but we had a really big event this way, so it's usually a little bit better.
I'm just gonna close it off by, is there any other community input from?
Yes, other community inputs.
I'll make it really quick, Carrie Boyle, um, I was just thinking, um, talking about the newsletter that maybe it's a good time because um, the revenue with motor vehicles, things like that, to remind people that have just moved into town that they need to, they have thirty days to register their vehicles
Oh, that's a good thing.
in the town of Rollinsford. And um, also maybe reminding people again, and I know it's been in newsletters in the past, about um, building permits for things, because those, I think people, yeah, they're revenue, revenue streams. And I think that people have kind of, out there have kind of slowed down doing that during COVID, I don't know, maybe reminders in the newsletter.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if people think about COVID, I think there were upgrades during COVID.
Yeah, they have.
Jack, in your, in your free time, would you like to maybe follow up with our insurance rate?
Do I copy?
It would be Primex, would you call the Primex to see if they have any early?
Let me follow up with Chuck.
Oh, you have a volunteer, perfect, thank you, Mike.
Can I, can I just say one more quick thing while you're wrapping up and having closed the meeting?
We haven't joined yet, but we are.
Just about um, the recreation, um, I, I really, I really would like to see, um, like Celia said, there were only three people attended the rec committee meeting. Um, I really think that more parents, um, it's hard to ask the taxpayers to fund something when you can't even get volunteer support from parents in town. Um, so I, I'd like to see a little bit more of that, I'd also like to see how many kids really participate. Um, and also, our kids now go to, they go from the grade school to Marshwood. And so maybe there's something to do with um, piggybacking on South Berwick's program. I just think we're a small town and when we're talking about salaries for a rec director, um, but yet we're, you know, we're really we're really focusing what we're giving the fire department and the transfer station, things like that. But we're gonna fund the recreation department. I just, I just think we need to you need more information and I, and I just think there needs to be more parent involvement. I know I'm kind of all over the place there, but. You need more information, and I, and I just think there needs to be more parent involvement, I know I'm kind of all over the place there, but.
I wonder if maybe that would be something for the newsletter of the.
Well, I, I was thinking of doing a help wanted and with the firefighter, what they want, and then the plow driver, but then unpaid opportunities, I thought I'd talk about having people volunteer and getting to somehow talk about, um, the real interaction, you know, the physical, that you're really meeting in person and working together in person, rather than just having a social media.
Yeah, and I, I think.
Relationship with the world.
My biggest, my biggest concern on the select board before me is biggest, so rec was the, the lack of parent participation. And it's something, at one point we had about eight, and it seemed like we were moving ahead, and it started dropping back down, and now they're like barely struggling.
Well, you have that, and also you have attendance at the schools going down some channels too.
Also, so I mean, there's a lot of things that we have to think about, I mean, we're not saying we're going to, you know, budget ten thousand, we're just saying that we may budget ten thousand, if there's, everything lines up.
Right.
But there are other opportunities for towns and stuff too, I agree, maybe we might explore that.
Well, maybe could we get something in the newsletter, if, you know, to try to solicit interest, um, even by email? If, ask parents if they're interested in recreation programs in town, email board or email, you know.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I like that. Yeah, that too.
There was a, I think, kind of it is, it's so amorphous, come volunteer, well, volunteer, what do you want to do? And you have to be more specific, now, when they had soccer the other year, they had tons of people, kids participating, the parents and.
Yeah, soccer was a big one, and, you know, this, basketball may be a big one, but.
Yeah, but yeah.
It has a lot to do with school too.
I don't, I don't think the basketball is going to fly this year, this year, that's just my gut.
Especially if they have to wear a mask.
This year as well, is that, you know, COVID isn't done.
Right.
That, that was my point there.
Carrie, did you have something?
Well, this is still on the same conversation, but going with what Salma said, um, I, I just think that this town has gotten away from volunteers. I think it would be good to get that back, um, and get more people interested in doing things, and it doesn't even have to be just with fire and rec, but, but other things. Because it just seems like everyone now, it's like, if you need something done, it's like, well, we have to, you know, we have to, it's, what are we paying this person, whatever? There are people that will volunteer their time and give back to the community, I do believe they're out there, um, you guys. You know, so, so I just, I think there needs to be kind of revive, you know, giving back and volunteering in the town, so.
Well, maybe that, that's kind of how we need to frame the quarterly, you know, are you interested in volunteering for the rec program? Are you interested in the rec program, are you, your children, so maybe try to be more open.
Yeah, conservation, I think, has empty slots.
So it's like two, we'll say two out of three people in rec right now, there's only one person that has kids, the other two are volunteering, just to volunteer, because they don't have kids. So it would be good if parents that have kids volunteer, you know?
All right.
Oh, you're welcome.
So we need to get our money at six thirty.
Yep.
On budget.
Yep, then it'll be like just budget.
Yep.
Move department.
And we only have a few to really close up, so if we.
Want your list, want your list those?
Email us and let us know if you get any information from insurance rates.
Sure, yeah. Is there any other business before I close out?
Jack, did you say?
No, I was just going to say, send us a list of those.
Oh, of all the takeaways?
The ones, no, the open items.
Oh, yes, I was.
So we'll all thank you.
Oh, and just one thing, I'd love to get that thirty or forty page of the, of the funds, I can get through all of them. All right, so I want to make a motion to close the meeting.
Second?
I second it.
All right, okay.